Okay. So, due to the conflict with the City Council Finance Committee, the meeting Wednesday, September 8th, has been changed to tonight, September 22nd at 6:00 PM. This meeting will be held remotely over Zoom. This meeting is being recorded in accordance with a government order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, Chapter 38, Section 20. Real-time public participation and comment can be addressed to the planning board utilizing Zoom virtual meeting software for remote access. This application will allow users to view the meeting and send a comment or question to the chair via the question and answer function submitted. Text comments will be read into the record. For those of you joining by phone, press star nine. If you want to ask a question, please raise your hand. A copy of this recording will be on the city's web pages. All votes will be done via roll call to ensure account and accuracy. As your name is called, please indicate that you are present. The following members, I Larry Hassan. In attendance, Tony Goncalves.
Present.
James Sweeney.
Present.
Samantha Ambrose.
Present.
Also in attendance, Director Rob May.
Oops, present.
Administrative Assistant Pamela Gurley.
Present.
And Deputy Chief Edward Williams. He's on mute.
Hi, how are you?
Good, how are you? Thank you. That being said, I think I'll just move to the agenda tonight, and I'm going to read off. So, we're starting with the review and acceptance of the minutes from August 3rd, 2021. Endorsement of A&amp;R plans, subdivision plans, and/or lot releases. Endorsement of plan for 21 Union Street. A&amp;R applications, 109 Emmett Street and 109 East Ashland Street. I have in parentheses here, East Ashland Street, Emmett Street, map 162, plot 6, 5R, and 5O. Map 002-001 Pleasant Street, in parentheses, Benson. I don't see anything here for lot releases. Street acceptances for Sheridan Street. I'll move to number one, permission to return to ZBA property 49 Keswick Road. There was a ZBA denial in January 12, 21. Applicant Dave Cruz and Curly and Hanson representing. Agenda item two, preliminary subdivision property 49 Keswick Road. Two lots, representative applicant David Cruz and Curly and Hanson. Agenda item three, site plan approval. Property 787 Main Street, applicant Adelson DePina, in parentheses, John Spink. Proposal, commercial addition. Agenda item four, site plan approval. Property address 340 Warren Avenue, applicant John Andrade, represented by J.K. Holmwood Engineering. Proposal, mixed use. Agenda item five, definitive subdivision property 50 Farrington Street, lot two. Applicant Domingos Lopes, representative J.K. Holmwood Engineering. Agenda item six, definitive subdivision property, map 16, Route 188, part of plot 97 Pleasant Street.
That should be 15 lots now.
Say that again, I'm sorry.
That should be 15 lots now. I didn't.
I don't see it. Oh, wait, no. Okay, keep going. I'm going to keep going. It says lots 18, but I did see in the notes that it's been reduced to 15, right Pam?
Correct.
Okay. Applicant CLM Development, representative W Engineering. I'm sorry, part of it was on the second page. Agenda item seven, definitive subdivision plan, property map 11, Route 56, plot 25, Rockland Drive. Map 16, Route 188, part of plot 97 Pleasant Street. I see it as lots number 17. Applicant Chilton Realty Trust, representative Jacobs Driscoll Engineering. The items listed are those recently anticipated by the chair, which may be discussed at the meeting. All items listed in this fact may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. So, with that being said, I think we get all the agenda items covered. Is there anything else I need to review at this point? Shall we start with a review of the acceptance of the minutes?
You're ready to go.
Ready to go. So, has everybody had a chance to review the minutes of August 3rd, 2021, meetings of the minutes of the meeting?
Yes, I make a motion to accept the minutes.
Second. So, we have a motion to approve the minutes of the meeting from August 3rd, 2021. Moving on to endorsement of plan for 21.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
You need to call the vote for that.
It'd be a good idea, wouldn't it? So, roll call, so for members voting on the meeting. Tony Goncalves?
Yes.
James Sweeney?
Yes.
Samantha Ambrose?
Yes.
And I Larry Hassan, yes. Thank you Pam, keep me on track. So, next we'll move to endorsement of plan for 21 Union Street.
Okay, this is a subdivision that's just been hanging out there for a while. They neglected to bring us the plan to endorse, and I would have brought it had we had a live meeting.
Right.
The plan is in the office, so if you guys could stop up sometime next week and sign the plan, we can get it back to them.
All right. So, do we need to vote on this too, as well?
No.
And this is not for a public hearing? It's not a public hearing item, correct?
It is not, and it's, the vote for this has already happened.
Okay.
And the 21-day appeal period has already passed. They just never brought the plan in to have it signed.
So, we need all the members of the board to come up to the office and sign off on it. When is a good time?
Anytime next week.
Okay.
Or I'll be there, you know, the rest of this week too, so if you want to come up tomorrow or Friday.
I'm assuming that's good for all the other members? And we'll move to A&amp;R applications, 109 Emmett Street and 109 East Ashland Street. Again, East Ashland Street, Emmett Street, map 162, plot 6, 5R, and 5O. Do we have two on here Pam? I see map 02 for Pleasant Street Benson, those are two separates, right?
That's a separate A&amp;R.
Has everybody had a chance to review what we have online and some of the notes? I'm just looking at two existing dwellings on one lot. These dwellings were built prior to the subdivision controller and can be divided through A&amp;R. I looked at these briefly. Me personally, I don't, I don't have any issue with it. I don't know if there's anything that needs to be addressed by the planning department about it, but I don't see any issue with, based on what I've seen already.
The office has no issue.
Okay.
I make a motion to approve the A&amp;R 109 Emmett, 109 East Ashland, et cetera.
I will second.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve and a second, so we'll vote. I Larry Hassan, yes. Tony Goncalves?
Yes.
James Sweeney?
Yes.
Samantha Ambrose?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Scott Feria has his hand up.
Okay.
Would you like him to be able to address you?
We already voted on it.
Sorry Scott, it's over.
I don't know if he has anything, I mean, do we, should we hear what he has to say?
Maybe he wants to speak on the next one.
Okay.
I don't think this is his. This isn't his.
Okay, so we can, we can, so we're all set on this item? Thank you, Mr. May. Map 002-001 Pleasant Street Benson. Let's see. Plan shows the division of the property into one conforming lot and non-buildable parcel. The non-buildable parcel is clearly marked with only 30 feet of frontage. This parcel will remain unbuildable. We have concerns with what will happen to it. The plan is submitted. I, I'm going to ask.
Make a motion to accept the plan that endorsed as the plan has been submitted.
Okay. Do we have a second?
I'll second. Mr. Chair, thank you.
Okay, so then we'll take a vote. Yes, from Larry Hassan, Tony Goncalves?
Yes.
James Sweeney?
Yes.
Samantha Ambrose?
Yes.
Okay. Moving on, we have no lot releases, so I see Sheridan Street, street acceptance. I read the information on it in the notes, and I don't know if, do we need a, the counselor to speak on it? Is Counselor Thompson available, or do we need his comment on it?
Not see Counselor Thompson.
I thought that was part of his ward, I believe.
I think he submitted it, but is a street acceptance totally in the purview of the City Council? You are just required to hold this vote, but the actual public hearing for the acceptance is through the City Council.
Okay, so we can, we can vote on this then?
To recommend favorably or unfavorably?
Recommend favorable acceptance of Sheridan Street.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you, we have a second. So, the vote audit, Larry Hassan, yes. Tony Goncalves?
Yes.
James Sweeney?
Yes.
Samantha Ambrose?
Yes.
So, we have a motion to approve. Okay, we're going to move on to our first agenda item. Permission to return to ZBA is property 49 Keswick Road. It was ZBA denial in January 12th. We have the applicants Dave Cruz and Curly and Hanson. Do we have the applicants online? I see somebody, I think Bill Self.
Bill Self is here.
Hi Bill, how are you ladies?
Seeing anybody else?
Is there anybody else from this, representing this team? I see somebody with their hand up. Let's see who that is, Craig. We'll move you to a panelist. Craig, if you would identify yourself when you get in the room. Craig, are you a, are you the applicant or in a butter?
I believe the woman he's with is the property owner.
Okay, thank you.
I think he's just trying to help her out.
Okay, so Bill, if you want to make your presentation?
Yes, Rob, thank you. Just got a text from Dave Cruz, he's stuck in traffic. Dave is going to join me at the office.
Absolutely.
He'll be here shortly, but we can go ahead and go forward. You take, we're representing, Curly and Hanson is representing Cruz Properties. They're looking to purchase the property at 49 Keswick Road. It's, it's, it's a large lot that originally went into the, into the Board of Appeals to create three lots, and it was denied back in January of '21. So, what we've done is we've applied and sent in a new revised plan, just asking for the, for the entire property to be divided into just two lots. One lot would be where the house itself would sit, and that would total 14,863 square feet. And the second lot to the back, which would actually front on Marsden, that total area would be 13,137 square feet. What we try to do is redo the configuration of a plan that was originally submitted, giving it, meeting the, you know, the setbacks for, for front, side, and rear on both of the lots, other than the non-conforming side on the existing house. And what we'd be asking for with the Board of Appeals is for the variance on frontage area and lot width for the depth. And also, it's a through lot. In your regulations, it, it would prevent from this being subdivided. So, those will be the items we'd be asking the Board of Appeals to rehear.
Okay. I'm just looking at notes from last time, Bill, that the ZBA didn't find any real hardships, and I'm concerned if we do approve and send this back, it may run up against the same thing again. I don't know, is it because it doesn't really seem to be any real substantial changes, or?
Well, the, the changes, Larry, we weren't representing the owner in the first case. We've picked it up through Cruz Properties.
Okay.
The woman who lives in the house, she's lived there for over 50 years. She's, unfortunately, it's, it's, we all get it to an age where everything becomes very difficult to upkeep, and, and she's, she has to sell the property, and she's always had, you know, it's, it's a, it's a large lot, almost, almost 28,000 square feet. All the other lots in the area are, you know, up to 8,000 to 10,000 tops. It's much larger, both lots, than all the rest. It's really, we know that financial hardships may not be the best in the world to ask for, but this, this is, this affords you opportunity for her to be able to sell and be able to go someplace to, to live in, and, you know, and that's my, my honest opinion of where the hardship would be. Again, it's been a large lot, it's, it's, it's been left, you know, pretty much, you know, natural on one side, up towards Marsden. And again, it, it wouldn't be, it certainly wouldn't be detrimental, the lot size, for the neighborhood up there, you know, to all the abutting properties.
Mr. Chair, I do have a question, please, if I may.
Feel free, thank you.
Yes, so when you say there was a substantial change, can you explain that again? Because I, you know, I mean, let me have you explain it again, please.
Is it possible to see it on the map, Bill? Can we get a look at it?
I, I don't have it here. It is in the packet we sent over. If Rob has the packet available.
That would be helpful.
I know I've seen this before, I'm just trying to get, pull this up online myself.
It's in the packet, it's a few pages into the packet, Rob.
And while I'm looking this up, if you wouldn't mind?
Well, that's the, that's, that's the plan we are submitting from Curly and Hanson.
Okay.
The original, I mean, the original lot had, you know, had the house cut off, and what they did was the, the depth between the two lots was 200 feet. So, what the original plan had shown on Marsden, they had come back 100 feet to match pretty much the depths on all of the other lots of surrounding it. And what they had done on Marsden was they cut it right in half, with each, each lot having 70 feet of frontage, and, and, but they only had 7,000 square feet. So, it was, it was ending up being, you know, lots that were much, you know, not much smaller, but were smaller than all the others. And I think the plan, I can't speak for the Board of Appeals, because again, I wasn't part of it.
Right.
I think it was just too small, maybe too much for asking. Again, and I wasn't there for any representation. This plan going forward into the Board of Appeals will have, will have, you know, the attorney that, representing Mrs. McCrane, who I believe is, is on, is on the Zoom meeting. But it was a lot different. What we've, what we've done is, is basically created, the other plan didn't meet the rear yard setback for the, for the existing house. It was only about 14, 15 feet where 30 is required. We try to, we try to, the difference is, is we've eliminated that and tried to make such that these, both these lots, except for the existing house, which is, you know, in a non-conforming status, but the, the proposed lot that we'd ask on, the house on number two, would meet all your standards as if it was just a regular lot. It's the, it's the area in the frontage, and the, again, the lot width, and the lot width, the requirement is 125 for 100 feet depth. So, those are the things that we, that we, the changes, basically went from a three-lot subdivision down to just the two lot, one fronting on Marsden Street, and the second on Keswick.
Thank you.
Okay. Just a notation, and I'm reviewing quickly too. Is it possible to center that home on the lot?
If.
It's way over to the left.
Yeah, if I can just point out, Rob.
I'm looking at that back lot line too, I'm sorry, Bill, it looks, it's really.
I'm sorry, I'm looking at my plan on my table. Rob, this is not the plan. This is not the plan submitted for, this is, this was a plan that we had submitted into the planning board under preliminary that we withdrew. The, if the first plan is the one we really want to look at.
Let me see if I can find that for you.
If you pull up the preliminary plan, that's going to show the plan he submitted to the board, because they're the same plan.
That's the same one. That was a, that was another lot that was, that was originally proposed, but we withdrew that application, because we refigured it into a much, a much more suitable configuration for both lots. It gave each, each, each lot a lot more rear yard, you know, use, and it made it much better.
Mr. Chair, can I just ask again why the ZBA denied this? Sorry if this is redundant.
Just reviewing my notes, the original application in January 12th was a divided that portion lot, two additional lots. The ZBA found in their denial that the subject property is not unduly constrained by the city zoning ordinance, the sole purpose of granting of areas, and therefore there would no hardship exist. The applicants, let's see, if the board will take account. This does not constitute a substantial change. Recommendation moved, now the ZBA denied. Is there, is there another plan? I, you're not seeing.
I downloaded a different plan.
It's, it's, it's on the original packet panel we submitted?
Yeah, it's all there.
It's part of the preliminary plan, which is the next.
I'm sorry, yeah, we submitted, we actually submitted two plans. One for a preliminary subdivision, and a second plan was to get to return back, because it hadn't been two years when, from the first denial. So, it was recommended that we put in both the preliminary plan and for that, the preliminary subdivision, as well as using that same plan to return to the, to the Board of Appeals.
Is it Matthew Costa with his hand up?
That's it, that's it.
Okay.
That's the right one, Rob. Now, I don't know if you could, if you have the packet, I mean, if there were still questions as far as the first one that was submitted, it was also in the packet, Rob, if you, you have the multiple pages available to call up.
I would have to locate those, hang on.
Well, I think, you know, if.
One of the concerns, though, that the department has, is that you had originally gone forward, and you were going to take this one lot, and let me, sorry, get the annotating tool out. You were going to take this one lot and divide it into three by basically slicing here and slicing here. And you've eliminated this proposed lot, but the house is still here, and the department's concern is that in the future, somebody may come back and try to slice one more time, but if, and, and that was one of the reasons why the zoning board rejected the application. So, the thought was, is if the house, the new proposed house were in the middle of the lot, we would not have the, a future owner would not have the ability to, to divide this even further.
Yeah, and we, we looked at the options, Rob, I understand what, what, what you're saying. What we try to do, this, the configuration of the new lot on the second, the new house location, the second lot, it provides two things. It gives it a little bit more privacy to both houses. It's, I mean, I can't imagine if they didn't, if, you know, I can't imagine they would try to now, or somebody would try to come in and try to re-subdivide the second lot of 13,000 into two lots. I'm sure, I don't think any one of the boards would entertain that. What, what this does is that, again, it gives both lots maximum use, especially to the rear yard on number 49, where it meets the setback where the original plan called for just 15 feet off the original house, and it really cut down the use of that backyard. If you, if out in the field, if you were in their real house there, you would see that that's the yard being used, and really not the side yard, as you're looking at the plan on the left of number 49. It's just an open area with a few trees on it. And again, but also in the proposal here, we, we construct a chain, a stockade fence on the real line, and again, that would add to the privacy of the two properties. And the house that was proposed here also conforms to all of your setbacks in the zone, in the I-1C zone. We just thought it would, it gives the maximum use for both lots and the privacy.
Mr. May?
Yes, ma'am.
So, since there's not a substantial change going from three lots to two lots, would there be substantial change if they agreed to centering that house on the second lot? Would that be a substantial change? I don't want to, we need to avoid sending stuff back to zoning that doesn't constitute going back, so would that be a substantial change?
You may have seen a letter in your packet from Philip Nazzarella, who at the time was the city solicitor, who specifically brought up a case like this, where the property dropped a house from a subdivision, just like this, going from a three-lot subdivision to a two-lot subdivision. And his comment then, as city solicitor, was that was not a substantial, substantive change. It, it's really up to the board whether that is a substantial change. The other issue that you have is the, the zoning board found that there was no hardship, so that there was nothing about the property's shape, its topography, its soil conditions that warranted a variance from the ordinance. So, that's your first hurdle, I think, is has the plan changed anything to address those issues? Has there been a change? Or were there, were there changes that show that the soil conditions, topography, or shape of the lot have changed? I don't see it here, but that's, that's up for you to decide. And then, once you get past that, you know, whether it deserves a variance, then is, is going from three lots to two lots a substantial change? And according to the legal opinion from the former city solicitor, it is not a substantial change.
Right, so that half answered my question. So, going from three to two is not, but if they change the location of that second house, does that?
It's still not a substantial change, but if the board wanted to fuck it up, as it were, that would make it a little bit more palatable. But it's still not a substantial change.
All right, thank you.
Okay. I don't know if there's any other questions from the members of the board, but is there anybody in the public in favor or opposed that we would like to speak on the matter?
I'm going to stop sharing my screen so I can see.
There is a. There is a Matthew Costa, I don't know, I moved him to panelists because he had his hand up.
Yeah, so, Mr. Chairman, this is Matthew Costa. Can you hear me? So I, I'm the attorney that represented the owner at the, at the original hearing with the zoning board of appeals. And so I am familiar with the questions and concerns that the zoning board had at that hearing. And I would represent to the planning board that, you know, the, the primary issue that we focused on at the hearing before the zoning board were the size of the lots. And at the time, the plan that was presented, it required a very, a rear yard setback variance from the existing dwelling to the, to the rear lot line. And so at, at least as to the comments from the board members when we presented the application, that was really what the focus was. And so, you know, I, I don't want to restate what's, what has already been said by Mr. Self, but I would respectfully submit that this is a very different plan from the plan that was presented the first time with the zoning board. So when we went before the zoning board, we had a plan that was creating three lots. And we were asking for two 7,000 square foot lots on Marston Street. So those lots had half of the frontage that the lot that is being created according to this plan has. Had half of the, the area. And there were variances requested from the existing dwelling. And so, you know, I, I, I I'm not familiar with this legal opinion that's been referenced by the city solicitor. But I do know that the issue, you know, when the planning board considers a, a return to the zoning board of appeals, the issue is that you can't bring the same plan back to the zoning board within two years because that was the subject of a denial. After the two years, you can take the same plan back to the zoning board and ask for the same variances. If you want to come back within the, within the two years, the plan just has, has to be substantially different from the one that was denied. And I'm not familiar with the, the different subdivision, you know, that was referenced or, you know, the, the specifics of that, but I would respectfully submit that it is a determination that's for the planning board based on, you know, the specific plan that you have in front of you and and I don't think that anyone could, could doubt that a plan that creates, you know, three lots out of a 28,000 square foot parcel is totally different from a plan that creates two lots, like the one that you have in front of you. I mean, the, the plan that we're showing you has twice as much frontage, like I said, twice as much area. And I don't think that there's, any realistic interest in returning to create a third lot like that. That was one of the concerns that was raised about the, the placement of the proposed dwelling. That was already denied by the zoning board. So there's no realistic, that would be, require another public hearing and I, I, I think that that's not proposed at all. So I just hope that the planning board, you know, will review this plan. I could share the prior plan. I have it. If, if the, if the board would allow me to, to, to share the screen, I could show you the prior plan. And you'll see that it's just an altogether different plan. So what my client, Mrs. McCrina, is just respectfully requesting for is that determination from the planning board that this is, it, it's a different plan. And then the merits of the zoning petition itself, that's up to the zoning board of appeals. So we'll present our case back to the zoning board. And I know they had a written decision, but I, I'm also familiar with the, with the actual comments they made at the hearing. And so we're optimistic that when we present this new plan that shows, you know, different dimensions, presents different issues and it creates much larger lots that are larger than, you know, pretty much all the lots in the area. My client's been there in this neighborhood since before most of those houses were built or around the time, you know, construction was ongoing in this neighborhood. She, she originally bought her property in 1957, I believe. And so she's a lifelong resident of this neighborhood. When she, you know, purchased, purchased this, you know, back in 1957, she probably could have done this as of right. But, you know, after having this property for, for as many years and now that it's 2021, the zoning is such that, you know, approvals are needed. And so we are optimistic that when we go to the zoning board, they will take a different view of this. It is a different plan. And so we're just respectfully requesting that the planning board give us that opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Costa. Mr. May, are we able to make a, if we were to consider approving this, are we able to make a condition that the deed is written that where the second lot cannot be divided? Is written into the deed?
Yes, you can.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I do have a comment in a Q and A from a Michelle Henson asking, stating that is, is there a reason not to grant the request? If not, I'm for helping a senior citizen and granting the request. I do not know if she is in a butter. I would assume that she is. I'm, I did ask her in chat and I'm waiting for her response. I also have a hand up from Jamal. I'm going to allow you to, lower your hand. Allow to talk. Oops. Disappeared. Where'd you go? Jamal, you may address the board.
Hi, can you hear me clearly?
I can hear you, thank you.
Okay, yes, I'd just like to make a statement. First of all, my name is Jamal Brathwaite. I'm a resident in Brockton and I'd like to make a statement in, in positive approval, in support of this applicant. I think that William Self made a very clear statement of hardship, why this would be needed. And secondly, the fact that the lot be divided, this could potentially create additional housing in the city of Brockton, therefore giving even more relief to a potential home buyer in the future. So it, overall, I think there is a legitimate case of relief and so I support 100% the planning approval, approve this applicant. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. May is the commenter in a butter?
I have not gotten a response from her.
Or the, the last commentator?
Michelle?
The last commentator is not in a butter?
No, it's not.
Just a citizen of Brockton.
All right, can we move on? Are there any other questions, Mr. Chair, from the community?
Yeah, any, any more for or opposed to this?
I do not see any more hands raised.
Does somebody want to make a motion? With some conditions on this one, it seems like what we've.
I'd make a motion to accept, to allow to return to zoning board with the condition that lot two, the deed is written that it cannot be divided again.
Can I, can I make a, can I ask a question before we start that process?
Absolutely.
On the, on the plan there, just maybe some explanation as to why the new dwelling is all the way to the left?
Yeah, if I, Bill Self, if I could answer that one, Jim. Again, what we, what we really try to do, if you, if you can imagine, first of all, this type of houses that we have proposed is what they call an A-frame colonial, two floors. It's, it's standard. It, it gives us, it gives us two things. It gives us an area to put a, a, a house square footage big enough in meeting all of the criteria in your zone. We're not asking for any relief from the Board of, Board of Appeals. If I, when I read the original determination, I think there was a, a strong weight on the fact that the original plan only showed the existing house having 15 feet of rear yard. Now, and the reason that we redid the plan the way we did was to afford that privacy, privacy for the, which would be new owners for number 49, as well as the privacy any other lot in the city would have legally with the lot that was on Marston. It also gives ample area on the old house in the rear yard that is, that's what is occupied now. At least you got beautiful gardens in there. We've, we've, we've saved almost all of that area of natural grass to be left as natural grass, which improves the value and the look of the house. And as well as up on the, on the new lot, you can see what a nice young family moving in. You know, there's a nice side yard to be able to, you know, pay, you know, put kids out and, you know, play, you know, with, you know, swings or whatever. We just, it gave the privacy that we thought was best for the lot and for both of the lots. That was really the main, the main focus on it. If we went to, in this instance, of putting something in the middle, we'd almost be forced to, you only have about maybe 22 feet of width. We'd have to come into the front yard on Marston and ask for variance or the standard colonial. And then you, you know, you wouldn't have any room for decks or anything else either. But you, we'd also have to, we'd go in asking for rear yard setback. So we're going from building a house proposed that meet all the setbacks to one we'd need, we'd need setbacks for both front and rear yard. That's what we are trying to avoid. And again, we feel it's a, a much more private setup for both, both lots. That was a.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions from the board or at this point, any other to oppose or for or against? If not, well, let's move to a motion and a vote.
Have a motion on the table?
Thank you, Pam.
To return it to the ZBA with a deed restriction that there was to be no further subdivision of the property. You need a second? Or not?
Planning board members, do we need a second?
A second.
Okay, so we have a motion to move, so a vote. Vote to approve with the conditions, I'm paraphrasing now, that it will not be further subdivided. Larry Hassan, yes. Tony Gonzalez?
Yes.
James Sweeney?
Yes.
Samantha Ambrose?
Come on mute, sorry, Mr. Chairman. Yes, thank you.
So motion to approve with the condition. So with that being said, we're moving on to the preliminary subdivision plan of 49 Keswick Road, Lot 2, and we're, again, we're with Bill Self and is Dave Cruz in yet too?
Yes, Dave did walk into my office.
Good, okay.
This is pretty much exactly the same.
Exactly the same.
Just take your vote.
You can just vote.
Yes.
Motion to approve?
Tony Gonzalez, yes.
I'll second the motion.
Vote, vote from the members, Larry Hassan, yes. Tony Gonzalez?
Yes.
James Sweeney?
Yes.
Samantha Ambrose?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, members.
Thank you. We thank the board. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you. Next agenda items, site plan approval, property 787 Main Street. Applicant Adelson DePina and John Spink, proposal, commercial addition. Do we have the applicant or representative?
Would you raise your hand if you're here for that?
Do you have anybody in? No?
Scott Rubin.
Okay.
Should be.
There he is. Hey, Scott, and it looks like, is, I'm, I'm assuming that's Mr. DePina?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, it is.
Craig, in this meeting, no, he should be.
No, John.
I'm trying to remove Craig. Go ahead with your presentation, sir.
Is, Pam, can you tell if John, is John on, John Spink on, in queue?
I don't see him as logged on unless he's logged on under some very odd name.
Okay. Well, John was John was supposed to join us. He's the one that did the, did the plan.
Councilon Nacastro, because I believe this is her ward.
Okay, is there anybody else associated with this case?
Nobody else has their hand up over there, so.
Okay.
Okay, well, we were before tech review on July 26th, there was a, had been, Mr. DePina had been before tech review quite a few times and we had wound up with a series of, at the last tech review meeting, a series of requests and answers to a lengthy narrative that I believe is on file with the board. Mr. Spink had provided this narrative dated July 1st. I believe it resolved most of the issues when we went before tech review. There were a few items that needed to be addressed, which Mr. DePina had no issue with and believed that John had filed a plan that is updated. I think the plan dated revised, last revised August 5th, 2021, addresses the few items that needed to be, needed to be dealt with. I don't know if you wanted to post this, the, the, the plan. It might be easier for me to go over it that way, but they really were just a few, a few things. There was an addition of some landscaped areas along the residential border on one portion of the property. Dumpster area was moved and, and provided for a protection area with fencing and we moved a handicap space, flipped the handicap space from a little bit away from the, there we go.
Right.
We had moved the handicap space that's on the corner of Main and Trebu. We flipped it to more into the corner than away so that it wasn't impacted by the, by the single entry and single exit area. Yep, along that side. We improved the landscaping along the border of Trebu Street. So we've got that corner. Now we moved to one parking space. So Mr. DePina was willing to give up, I think it was a 15, 15 spaces before, now it's 14. And again, the dumpster area is now can, will be constructed with an enclosure. There'll be some six foot, I think it's six foot fencing that there was a sample along that order there along with the six foot fencing along the residential, exactly. So good work with the pointer there, who's ever managing that. So thank you, Mr. May. Working along that line there. So we have opaque white fencing that will shield the, the project from those two, I think the residential neighbors on either side. So with that, I think it, it complies. I think they added the infiltration area that was requested as well, sort of working off my notes from, from our last meeting. And again, we'll be going to the Board of Health for a waiver for that 10-foot buffer on the, on the dumpster. That's really the only place on this site that it can, it really can be located safely anyway with the proper enclosure to keep it protected from the public as we had discussed at the, at tech review. So with that, we'd ask that the board approve this site plan and I think Mr. DePina is ready and prepared to, you know, make this site substantially improved from where it is after the fire that occurred at this property and get this back to being a productive project here with some new employees and a refresher for this corner that needs it.
Okay. I see that Councilon Nacastro was on here, so would she like to speak on this first before board members or?
Yes, I would. Thank you. Good evening, planning board. My name is Susan Nacaster. I represent Ward 4 in the city. This property is located at the corner of Main and Trebu and as such is, is in Ward 4. I'm speaking in favor of this and let me very briefly tell you why. I've known Mr. DePina for several years now. He was formerly a partner with someone who was, was supposed to be a friend in that, in the operation of an auto repair business at this location. And the friend operated it very poorly, violated all of the license provisions and, and other things. And Mr. DePina was forced to buy him out, assume full ownership of the property. Then he had a fire. He's worked with me, he's worked very hard to get to tonight's point of approval. He worked with me very willingly on the license and the license stipulations that I brought in front of the city council several months ago. He has an auto repair, I think, mechanical and body licenses and a garage license. I support this. I support this. He's a fine young man. I think he's a good businessman and will be a credit to the neighborhood. I'm looking forward to it being cleaned up. It, it looks so much better than it did a year ago. Neighbors are looking forward to it. Another business owner has expressed how, how glad he is that Mr. DePina is taking over. And this is the last piece in getting this business reopened and and that corner looking better. And so I support this. Thank you for listening.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Board members, any comments?
Mr. Chairman, could I make a comment?
Sure. Yes, please.
And this is probably more directed towards the licensee. He currently has a motor vehicle repair license that was approved by the city council. And the drawing with parking spaces submitted to that had sixteen spaces. So I would suggest he get in touch with Councilor Castro and just modify that license so that everything is equal and there's no differences in between.
Good point.
Okay.
That acceptable, Scott and Adelson?
Yeah, we can't really, we can't really change that since we pretty much needed to make some modifications and improvements to the site with the landscape buffer. So we've stuck with pretty much fourteen spaces. So we're okay with that.
Board members, any comments, questions?
Yes, Mr. Chair, just, just a brief question. Good evening, sir. So I see here in the notes that it talks about green spaces that are going to be provided here. Can you just tell us a little bit about that?
Yeah, the green spaces are shown on the plan on the borders of Trebu along the parking line, along that, along that border. This is all new. And it's sort of what we would call a landscape strip. There'll be some general mulch bed and shrubbery in that area. And that's the, that's shown as, but those circ, those circular plants are, are all, that's a landscape bed. And then on the, on the Main Street side, there's also the same type of thing, sort of a mulched area with, with shrubs. So that's, that's the green space that's re-required. I believe it meets all the criteria.
Thank you, sir.
Any other board members? Do we have anybody else from the public opposed or for? That would like to be heard?
Mr. Chairman, I do not see any hands up.
So then I
I do want to remind, remind attendees that if you hover towards the bottom of your screen, you'll see a raised hand icon that looks like a hand up. If you have any questions or comments on a particular case, if you could push that icon, we will then be able to turn on your microphone so you can address the board. And I still see no one.
Okay. Just a note here, Pam, if move, if we move to approve this site with standard conditions, is there anything else that needs to be read into this or we, is it pretty much understood what their plan is?
Unless you want to put in the, that they still need a Board of Health waiver, but there's a wording in the app, in the approval that says there's still required to get all the licenses that are necessary for his business.
I don't think we needed that. So I, I guess I'm looking for a motion.
Motion to approve with stipulations from Mr. Chairman?
Second.
Okay, so we're gonna roll call vote. Larry Hassan, yes. Tony Gonzalez?
Yes.
James Sweeney?
Yes.
Samantha Ambrose?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Councilor Castro.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
All right, thank you.
There's a red stamp plan that we're going to have to get to you. That is the only plan he can use to get a building permit on. So if he goes to try to apply for a building permit now, he needs to wait.
Wait, you'll just let us know when the plan is available?
I can send a PDF to you and I can send a PDF to him because I don't know who the contractor is, so.
And that'll, that'll have the red stamp on it?
It will.
We can print that.
Sometime next week.
Okay, great. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Good to see good business in the city.
Thank you.
Moving on to agenda item four, site plan approval, property three forty Warren Avenue, applicant John Andrade. Representative J.K. Holmgren, proposal is mixed use. And assuming we have them on.
I moved Scott.
I saw John, oh, there's John. I got him.
I see Scott.
Scott, you're on camera and everything.
I'm ready.
There comes John. Is there anybody else on the team?
I hope not.
Those billable hours add up, so. Edit, sir.
Okay, ready for you, Scott.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Board members. Scott Faria from Holmgren Engineering, representing John Andrade for a site plan approval of a project at three forty Warren Ave. It's an existing kind of a large building right at the corner of Warren Ave and Father Kenny Way, just down the road from the parking lot at the courthouse. John has done a lot of work out rehabbing the existing building that's, that's been sitting there. He's redone the windows, kind of refaced the whole building. Has done a lot of work on the exterior and the interior. We're here tonight for site plan approval to turn the second floor into four residential apartments. We've been to the Board of Appeals. We're granted a variance for this mixed use. In the site plan we had before you were making considerable improvements to the property. We are required to have fifty parking spaces. We are going to propose fifty-six spaces. Right now, the existing property essentially has no green space and definitely has no drainage. And we're adding both. We're adding a substantial drainage system to the rear of the building under the parking lot that'll handle the roof runoff and a good portion of the parking lot to make sure that the water does not go uncontrolled out to Warren Ave or out to Cottage Street. So that's a a major improvement for the, for the neighborhood. And the second thing we're doing is adding a considerable amount of green space to the property. Right now, it's pretty much just parking lot and weeds around the perimeter. So we're greening that up and, and kind of beautifying the, the neighborhood. So we did go to tech review back at the end of June. And we made the changes to the plan that you see before you that would discuss the major changes that we had. The first thing that came up was a change to the parking layout right in front of the building. As you stand on Warren Ave, the, the left-hand entrance, that face of the building, we had the handicap spaces closer to Warren Ave. And it was suggested that we move those around to make them closer to the doorway. So we flipped the delivery space with the handicap spaces, made that change. The other really significant change we made both at ZBA and at tech review, there was discussion about the fire truck exit out onto Cottage Street. Cottage Street is a one-way street. And we were asked if we could widen the entrance that we had. And also if we could kind of angle it just to give the fire trucks kind of a head start making that turn onto Cottage Street where it's a one-way traffic. We didn't, we originally had it proposed as a ninety-degree intersection like we would typically do. And it was suggested by, by Chief Williams that we kind of angle a little bit just to help those trucks get out onto Cottage Street. So we made that change as well. In doing that, we lost one parking space, but we, like I said, we have six extra. We increased the green area a little bit and made it a little bit better for the, for the fire department. And those are really the, the changes that we've made as a result of tech review, Mr. Chairman. And I think we've, as I said, I think John's got a good plan in front of him and has already done a good job on the building and certainly improving the look of it. And these site changes will certainly make the, will be a big benefit to the neighborhood.
Okay, and I'm just following up on some notes too about the area closer to property number three sixty-two and accessible from Warren Avenue should not be used for parking.
Yes.
So be clearly marked for deliveries only?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, that's exactly. Mr. May's flagging that up right there. There's a little kind of an alcove between the two buildings. But we'll, we'll certainly note that on the, on the, on the red stamp plans.
Okay. I don't have any further questions. Any thoughts or questions from the Planning Board members?
I don't have much to add. It looks like a clean plan.
I think this has been through a few times. I know I've seen it at tech review at least once or twice.
It has.
Anybody else? Do we have anybody in, it's a, being a public hearing, do we have anybody opposed or in favor that would like to be heard?
I'm sorry, I have to stop sharing so I can see that. I have one person. Jamal, I'm going to allow to speak. Jamal, if you can identify yourself.
Hello, can everyone hear me?
Can hear you, yes.
Okay, wonderful. Yes, my name is Jamal Brathwaite and I'm a Brockton resident. I want to give it up, give a positive statement of support for this applicant. I'm asking for the Planning Board to approve this applicant's site plan so this building can become a, a productive asset that will attract people to Brockton and be a resource for people here as well as be a higher valued, valuable taxable asset to the city. So hence I'm asking. And I've seen the property. It looks beautiful, by the way. Well done. It's one of the most beautiful buildings in all of Brockton. And the work inside is superb. So I can't wait to see the final product. Thank you.
Thank you, Jamal.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Not to be a nitpicker, Scott, but could you just change the spelling of Father Kenny Way?
Yeah, I know. I was gonna say something. Thank you, Ed. I didn't want to be there. All right.
You didn't want to be that guy.
I get called on it all the time in my contracts at work. The name is spelled wrong. You got an S instead of a Z. So, okay.
I know, I know we mentioned it last time, so I just wanted to, for longevity.
I think you did. We'll make sure that's changed, chief.
Mr. Chairman, we have another person who would like to address the board.
Please do.
He can speak?
Is Pac Global? Identify yourself before you speak because we need to have this on public record. And so I need a real name. And for the record, so please go ahead.
Good afternoon. My name is Jamal Gooding. I am speaking on behalf of this, excuse me, before you. I am a Brockton resident and I just wanted to say I fully support this project. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, I, I actually have one question, please. Good evening, sir. So you talked about that green space and it's very big with me. Could you tell us a little bit more about what your plans are to turn this space green or what we're going to be looking at?
Sure. Well, we have a lot of perimeter plantings, which currently there are none. So we have a bunch, as Rob's showing, between our property and the courthouse parking lot. As you've probably noticed right now, really the only thing that separates our pavement from the courthouse is just a chain link fence. There's really nothing else. So we're going to kind of break up that sea of asphalt. And then in addition to that, we have a green island right there that breaks up some of the parking up against Cottage Street. Another landscaped area at the, at the exit of Cottage Street.
Perfect. Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
I think that's about all you can fit in there anyways, but it, it looks pretty good to me, too.
It's better than what they've got now, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Anybody else in the public opposed or in favor of? If not, we'll move to a motion.
I have another person who would like to speak.
Okay.
What is Michelle Hansen? I am going to allow her to speak now.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Michelle Hansen. I'm a resident of Brockton and I am also speaking in support of, of this proposition. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, there's no carrying over stipulations of any kind, are there?
Not that I'm aware of. I, maybe Pam would know that instead of I, but I don't believe so.
Carrying over stipulations? I don't understand.
Well, there's no, no one mentioned any stipulations on this, have they?
Other than the area to be clearly marked for deliveries.
Right.
Conditions.
So it would be standard conditions with that specific special condition. Yes.
So do we have a motion?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Okay, so we'll have a vote with I'm, I'm gonna state that the delivery area will be marked for delivery area. And I don't know if there's anything else that needs to be read into along with standard conditions.
That covers it.
So vote Larry Hassan, yes. Tony Gonzalez?
Yes.
James Sweeney?
Yes.
Samantha Ambrose?
Yes.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to agenda five, we're moving along. We're getting there. Fifty Farrington Street lots, two lots, applicant Domingos Lopes, representative is J.K. Holmgren. I'm assuming that's you, Scott?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Scott, do you have anybody else with you?
Domingos Lopes, no?
No, I don't think so, Pam.
Okay.
No, I don't believe so. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Scott Faria, Holmgren Engineering, representing Domingo Lopes on this project on Farrington. It's a subdivision technically of a larger piece of property on Farrington Street where before you folks, way back in the springtime, I believe, submitting a preliminary plan which allowed us to go to the ZBA to allow for this division that you see in front of you. The property is owned R two, so two family dwellings are allowed. ZBA granted the variance to allow a two-family dwelling on Lot B. So now the next step in that approval is, is coming to you folks for the official definitive subdivision. As part of that submission, we do have some comments from the city engineer that he would like addressed. You know, there's, there's probably six or seven things that he would like addressed. I, I don't, I don't know if we should go over everyone, Mr. Chairman, or if it'd just be, I suppose it would just be easier and probably better for everybody if we just answer any questions your folks would have and then let me make the changes, get back to the city engineer and hopefully get his blessing for the next meeting.
So I, I guess, you know, what the city engineer is requesting your and your applicant, the applicant is okay with doing, correct?
Yeah, it's really just details on the plan, Mr. Chairman. Nothing significant, to be honest with you. You're not gonna, the house is staying where it is, the driveways, the little parking area in Lot A. Everything's going to stay where it is. It's just details on the plan. You know, that he would like to see. So you know, we can argue back and forth whether or not we need them or don't need them or should need them or shouldn't need them. But you know, I, I think in fairness, it puts you guys at a, in a tough spot if we push it to go forward when you have a kind of an outstanding letter there. Puts us in a bad spot. I'd rather address these comments and get a, a clean letter for the next meeting, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
I agree with that. I thank you, Scott.
Sure.
Do we have any other thoughts or questions from the members?
I'm, I'm good with it.
Samantha's with it. This is a public hearing. So do we have anybody that would like to speak in favor or opposed?
Well, we're continuing this, correct?
Oh, we're gonna, oh, we are gonna continue?
Right.
Can I continue, Scott?
Yes, please.
We don't need to have a public hearing. I'm sorry. Okay. So Pam, help me with this. If we're gonna continue, this is gonna, how, how are we gonna state this?
Well, Scott, I'm assuming you want to continue to the November meeting because it's too late to get on our October meeting, which is now weeks. Yeah. So if that is the case, I'm gonna ask you to sign the waiver because this was a preliminary. And Planning Board's turnaround to make a decision is shorter.
I'll get you that waiver and the continuance request as well tomorrow, Pam. I'll get you that waiver and the continuance request as well tomorrow Pam.
So then the planning board members just need to make a motion to continue, correct?
To a date certain, so that they don't need to re notify abudders or rerun the legal ad.
So what is our date in November, November?
I think it's the day after the election.
Oh, wait a second, yeah, 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 we gonna, will it be November 10th this year?
Be the third if it's after election.
Oh, wait a second, sorry, yep, I'm looking at my, okay.
It's November, you're, you're a Wednesday that.
Right, it's a Wednesday.
Yeah.
Okay, so we need a motion on that, planning board members?
Make a motion to continue this to November 3rd meeting.
Second.
Okay, so roll call vote, Larry Hassan, yes, Tony Gonzalez?
Yes.
James Sweeney?
Yes.
Samantha Ambrose?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you folks.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Alright, moving on to you all set? Okay.
Yep.
Agenda item six. Definitive subdivision plan, property map 16 Route 188 part of Plot 97 Pleasant Street. Number 15 applicant CLM Development, Representative W Engineering. We all here, it looks like, I'm seeing a few here, so. And I believe Attorney Burke too?
We have
Moved Attorney Burke, I moved Evan, I moved Charlie, and it's but this one. Presenting, I don't know about the butters.
Okay, worry about the butters when they start raising their hands. After the presentation's over.
Okay. Good evening Attorney Burke.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, members of the planning board. I have the pleasure of representing Charlie Macy and this is a somewhat mature project that's been before the board on a few instances. It has undergone some revisions. Evan is going to be speaking about where we are exactly. But as an overview, we have modified the plan before you. So now it's a 15 lot subdivision that meets all of the frontage. Total land area and the zoning requirements for the city of Brockton. There are essentially two waivers before the board. The first waiver relates to the issue of the length of the roadway. We have tried to address that in a couple of ways. First, we have, and Evan will be in more detail, worked with the abutting subdivision that I also happen to represent. To create an emergency access that would allow for a water looping to improve the flow in that particular area. And an emergency access. Also, we have sought to discuss this project with the police department and with the fire department. And I'm very pleased to say that we have for tonight's hearing for the planning board's consideration, two letters of support from both the police department and the fire department, basically indicating that they have no public safety issue concerns for the length of the roadway. So I'm gonna let Evan go ahead and follow up. And it is our sincere hope that at the end of the meeting, that the planning board will put this to a vote and approve the traditional subdivision that it is. Evan?
Thank you Attorney Burke, for the record, it's Evan Watson with W Engineering representing the applicant. If I could have permission to share my screen. Say, I'll go to so just so we remind ourselves where we are, this is the area in question. It's south of Pleasant Street, east of Route 24. If we rotate this, it'll be in the direction of our plan. You can see we've modified to 15 lots. And it's essentially an extension of Westbury Road. And then it has one other road with two turnarounds, Leody Lane. As Attorney Burke mentioned, we have easement that goes across here for extending the water line and access road. We also have a detention basin on this side. That's gonna handle all the stormwater from our project. It also has an access easement that comes through here that could potentially be used as well for accessing this property in the future. The previous submittals showed a detention basin in this area, but through the engineering review, it was determined that would be better to take the existing drainage from this property into this small detention basin and actually tie it into this one, so. Since you've seen the last set of plans, this basin was eliminated and this one got slightly larger. Let's step into the plans here. And you can see right here, this is where we show that easement, we have the easement for the sewer line.
Evan?
Yes, sir.
Unshare and reshare.
Oh, okay, very good, yeah, I switched windows, thank you Rob. Okay, very good. So this is shown on the definitive plans. These easements are highlighted, so they can easily be shown. And one of the reasons why we chose the area, this easement here, is is actually to exist as existing stone wall right here, so it seemed like a great logical place, it's in between the stone wall and the property line. We'll put a little paved apron at the end and then we can get right through. As Attorney Burke also mentioned, we've reduced to 15 lots. And that's so we have full compliance with all the zoning regulations for frontage and area. Believe my last letter to you dated 8:30 was basically stating that we had three outstanding items with the review of Beta Group. They were asking that those be a condition of approval. Well, since the meeting ended up getting delayed for a few weeks, we were able to make all the changes that they requested. So we've submitted a new set of plans. And I can definitively say that by changing, by complying with any of their changes, we did not change the design at all. They asked for a little bit of extra notes to help the contractor construct the design properly. Add a detail and do a test pit, so we did all those. Beta is a review of all of our information. And we're expecting a positive outcome from them. And you can see the test pit was done right here. So we can construct this basin as we show here. Think that's, oh, let's see, the only other thing that we added that wasn't on the list. We added a gravel access road detail. And we coordinated with the abutting project so that we both have the same exact detail on both of our plans. And this easement for the water line and emergency access matches up precisely between the two projects. So I think that will all work out very well. And given that we got a letter from both fire and police. You know, we believe that this, this length of road should be acceptable. Again, given that we've added the emergency access. Charlie's committed to actually add sprinkler systems to the houses here. So that that does help them out, you know, the fire department as well with the extra length of the road. So we're happy to take any questions, unless there's anything else that Charlie or Attorney Burke wants to add. And be happy to address any of those questions.
I will clarify, Mr. Chairman, just two things, one, I believe Evan referenced the concept of an easement for access of adjacent land. That's land is the land that's toward Braymore Road. And there are no plans now before the board are contemplated for a subdivision. The access would be for emergency access. It would not be for roadway access, that's the plan. The second thing is that in my discussions with the chief today, he did mention that we did not ask for a waiver on a a, a, a fire, what is it chief?
The fire alarm box.
Fire alarm box. And, and if the board is so inclined, we would be more than happy to submit another request for waiver for the removal of that, the fire alarm box, which I think is consistent with most of these subdivisions.
Evan, if you could go back to your drawings and discuss what is happening at the former, or soon, potentially former turnabout at Westbury Road where it terminates now?
Yes, let me share my screen once again. So right now you can see Westbury Road comes up and it ends in a cul-de-sac. Now, a cul-de-sac is usually within the right-of-way and the right-of-way follows, you know, alongside the pavement. In this particular case, this Westbury Road had been planned to be extended to the end of the property line, however, it wouldn't have given a proper turnaround if this project never went forward. So there were easements placed on these two abutting properties in the shape of a cul-de-sac. And when they developed Westbury Road, they actually constructed those cul-de-sacs. And the stipulation, and I believe it reads in these members' deeds here, these homeowners, that once this road gets extended and this turnaround's been placed, that these would then be removed. And those easements could be removed and that returned to their lawn. So that would be no problem to have that as a condition of approval. Again, it's not proposed in these plan sets, because it's already proposed within those deeds and can easily be done. Without modifying the cross-section, without modifying any of the drainage or anything else. You can see that all the utilities were installed with that in mind, with that already preconceived.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, on that point, I have in fact read the deeds that came in. And Mr. Macy will be more than happy if the removal is made to that cul-de-sac to loan and seed for the homeowner. So that she will have an extension of her lawn at his expense. I have not read thoroughly the easement and the language. And it may require communication with the homeowner while we're going through that process, but in terms of, so that the board is fully aware. Mr. Macy understands and will agree that when he removes that cul-de-sac and if it gets removed, he will make a, an improvement to the homeowner with grass seeded lawn.
Mr. Chairman?
Okay, Rob.
I do want to remind the board, in your documents in front of you now, this proposed subdivision is a pumped sanitary sewer system. And that this road will remain private forever and ever. And the city is not taking any responsibility for the for the sewer system.
There'll be a homeowners association with this?
They will.
Okay. Along with what we were talking about with the abutting property, the neighbor. Something about extending the driveway along with the landscaping as well, I think would be needed. Because of the way it's gonna cut into it. I don't know if that's something that we need to discuss or not, but. Because with the cul-de-sac is being taken out now, it's, it's gonna leave our driveway short. And I don't know if that's something that needs to be addressed.
Yeah, the driveway could be extended, would be extended to the asphalt, so they'd have access, yeah.
Well, again, that wouldn't be a problem, Mr. Chairman. But I, again, just, having not fully read the language, we may need the homeowners' assent to do the work. And that's what my concern is, but we will do the work.
Right, okay. Long as we're at least having, we're open to having that conversation about it. Is there anybody else on your team that would like to speak or?
I think, I think you've got us for now. Mr. Macy hopes that the planning board will see the value of very high-end classy subdivision, he's built over 100 homes, he does a great job. I think Mr. May knows, he's done work in the city. The work that he does when it ends is a good product, and that's exactly what he'll do in the west side of Brockton.
Just a few other notes too, that if this waiver is approved, we're not setting a precedent setting on this with the city and wondering about the letters that we have from the police and fire department that they will go on record to?
We certainly have no problem with that, and I think as the city planner knows, that each waiver request is individually taking on its own merits.
I don't have any further questions right now, any thoughts or questions from board members?
Oh, we've seen this a few times, I, I think I'm pretty good with it.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I just want to make sure that there are no, you know, public safety concerns, and it sounds like there are none, we have the police on board. Right, we have the police chief on board, we have the fire chief on board. And so if there are, you know, no public safety concerns that should be brought to our attention, and much like James, I'm good with it.
Mr. Chair, if you'd like to open the public hearing?
Yes, I would, let's open it up, anybody opposed or in favor, we would love to hear you.
I have a question from a Joanne Zine from Cypress Drive, which is to the south of this project. She would like to know that if the emergency exit is being discussed, is it going to be a paved gated way? And as you saw in your, from the presentation, it is a gravel way. I believe there is some vegetation, but I will ask if Evan or Mr. Burke could discuss gating.
Sure, Rob, I can address that, so. The only pavement I was showing on the plan was just an apron up by the road, just so a gravel might not wash into the, the street. But we can have a gate right there at the entrance. And we have a detail here that shows it's a dense grated crushed dome. So again, it's not paved, it's not something that somebody might accidentally drive down. If they come down into the subdivision and say they want to get over to Cypress and take a shortcut, something like that. It's truly an emergency access way. I did not show a detail for a gate, but there will be a gate at the entrance and be working with Charlie on picking a gate that looks nice, I imagine he might even put a couple bushes and things there, but that would be gated off, keys would go to the fire department, whatever kind of key system that they would want to have. We could accommodate that, so.
Okay, thank you. I have Lou who would like to ask a question. And I'm going to allow Lou to talk. And would, Lou, would you unmute yourself and identify yourself, please?
Hi, I'm Hope Taylor McGregor, resident at 25 Westbury Road. And I would just like to talk about the construction as, as, as the project's gonna happen. It's gonna happen over, you know, some months and possibly years. And there'll be a lot of heavy equipment coming through and the area that we live in, the beginning of Chilton Road and that area, the roads are already in rough shape. Have potholes, dips. And over time, I believe that the conditions could get worse. So I was just wondering if there is any plans to either pave the road prior to the start of construction or doing something afterwards to improve the conditions of Chilton Road.
Yeah, if I may, address this question then, Mr. Chairman, I'll bring up. So this construction for this property is actually gonna be a little unique, because we already have this project went in and there was a And there was a flat kind of construction yard style zone down here to the east. And we can turn this this way so we get north and south correct. So obviously, any construction vehicle that comes onto this property is going to have to come down Westbury Road. There's no getting around that. The first thing that we're going to be doing is, you know, constructing our construction access. We have an erosion control plan with a track pad and all that typical thing to protect, to make sure that we don't track dirt and anything. And we'll have sweeping program in place for that. It's also great that we already have kind of an area down here, so the construction workers can actually come in and park down in this area as much as they can without having to do a lot of parking up here on the road. So that, that's another benefit there. And then as far as, let's see, the actual condition of the road, I used Taunton's website here because they have aerial photograph from the spring of 2021 here. And it appears to me that Westbury Road, Kelly Lane, this is after the final course of pavement was laid down, was done all the way up to Westbury Road, almost all the way to Chilton. And then Chilton comes in to Pleasant Street. Now, I believe Chilton Road is actually a public city street all the way down to about here. So, you know, it's.
Wes, Ian, you've changed screens again?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm used to being able to share my whole screen, not just the window. Yeah, okay. So now maybe you guys can see this. I apologize. So you can see Westbury Road and Kelly Lane was recently paved all the way up to about here where the city's control of the city's streets begin. It appears that this road, which I don't know the status of this, was also paved. I'm assuming that might be private road as well. If the city did want to repave this and do any work on it, I would recommend that it be done after any construction is done on the road. But it's not our proposal to work on Chilton Road or Pleasant Street or do any work out there. You know, if we cause any damage to any roads or anything like that and within our area, we would certainly be replaced and repaired, but. You know, they're looking to be a good neighbor. You know, they're going to be there, like you said, for a little ways, hopefully not years. It should, it's not that big of a road. It should just take a couple months to put everything together. And then once the road's in, you'll only see, you know, construction of single family homes. So once all the heavy dirt and everything is all done with, it should quiet down for a little while.
Lou, does that answer your questions or any other questions?
Well, I mean, I still believe that the traffic still coming in from Pleasant Street onto Chilton Road over time is just going to make the road conditions worse than it already is. So, I mean, that's one of my main concerns right there is just the conditions of the road throughout the process, because it's already pretty bad.
Rob, anything that we should be addressing on that or Pam regarding that?
Mr. May, the portion of the road that Lou is talking about, is that a public way or is that private?
It is a private, it is a public way that was built before our subdivision standards went in. I'm willing to bet it was not built to city standards and would not hold up to that. But because it's a public way, I don't know how we would treat that situation. Pam, who's been here longer, might have an idea.
Is it a question for DPW at some point or no?
They could certainly get in touch with the ward council.
The new ward council in November?
The new ward council in November and ask that this be placed on a list to be repaved.
It probably needs to be rebuilt.
It probably does, but the section that runs down to the is pretty much a cow path. And it's the other section that runs through, that attaches to Westbury. So one side just goes to the end and the other side.
Yeah, I measured on the aerial photo, the section that goes through to Westbury is at least 30 feet wide. So that's a pretty good road. It is a unique setup where one road kind of diverges into two zones. But again, that was started, must have been in the 40s or 50s or somewheres around there.
It's a long parkway, yes.
Any other questions?
Lou, we don't have an answer for you.
Okay, all right. I believe that's all I have at this time. Thanks.
I have another person who would like to speak. I am going to allow you to talk. And could you?
Yes. Sure. Can you hear me?
Yes. Could you introduce yourself, please?
Yes, sure. My name is Mrs. Francois and I.
Oh. I'm sorry, that was my fault.
I'm mute now.
Mrs. Francois, you.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Can you?
Yes, okay, great. So again, my name is Mrs. Francois and I do live on Kelly Lane. So I've been here probably a little over a year. I'm a new resident to Brockton. And I actually share the same concern as the caller that just called before. So, you know, I do have a concern about the construction vehicles coming in and out and how that will impact those of us who are already in that subdivision on Kelly Lane and in Westbury Lane. And also, you know, Pam, you mentioned that if we wanted to petition the city to fix that road on Chilton Road, that we would need to reach out to the city council. I guess my request is, you know, for this new contractor that is going to be already accessing and coming through, is there a way that you can build that into the proposal for this construction? Because if you're going to try to attract buyers for this new subdivision, and these are, you know, these homes are pretty substantial and they're pretty costly and we're paying pretty high taxes. Is there a way, I mean, and so you're going to need to attract buyers to come in. And I know one of the, you know, one of my observations, when I bought, purchased my home, I just assumed that that road was going to be fixed at the end of construction and it never was. And I believe that you're going to have concerns from folks who are going to be looking to purchase those new homes if they're going to, if that road, that Chilton Road, is going to be their only access in. So I would, I would love if there's a way that that could be incorporated into the plans. And if not, what do we need to do to make that happen? And then my other question is, when is this construction going to start? Because that's, you know, that's going to mean for some of us, you know, making sure that we're careful coming in and out. I have, you know, lived in another, under construction in another subdivision and it took a couple of years. And it is very inconvenient, you know, you've got to be careful with your tires coming in and out and, you know, the dust. And so can you give us an idea of how long this is going to take? And also, my first request, which is, is there any way that you can, you know, you've got to beautify that entrance, you know, to be able to attract the type of buyers that you're looking for? Thank you for allowing me to talk.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'll address the obvious 800-pound gorilla. But we can't do off-site mitigation under this normal 15-lot subdivision and deal with a public road. I mean, that's not a realm of possibility in this situation. It sounds like that there was a condition that existed and we just went through the development of Westbury. And it seems like there wasn't any substantial change from what was basically the existing condition, all of which seems to suggest that they are in the right spot to go ahead and petition the city to try to make improvements for what is not an exceedingly long stretch of roadway, which may well be within the city's budget in order to improve the benefit of the rest of the community. But Evan, I heard you say something about the roadway construction would be roughly about two months?
Yeah, the roadway construction, I'd say it'd be less than six months. I don't want to rush Charlie here. I don't know. There is some earthwork to do here, but it's not. This length of road should be something that can be accomplished in one, what you'd call a construction season. So not having to, you know, go from one winter through another winter type of event. I know a lot of other times, you know, we had a subdivision coming off of a main road. It's a little bit different that when you have a subdivision extending off of an existing neighborhood. And, you know, your concerns are correct. You have a neighborhood there with people, like, you know, walking your dog, there's kids at play. So we want to make sure that the construction workers are aware of that. So a lot of times, you know, projects that I'm involved in, we put up a sign for construction vehicles, please go slow. We can certainly set something up like that to make sure that when, you know, a busy construction worker is, you know, late to the site and he's coming into the project, he sees the sign, wait a minute, I'm back in the neighborhood, time to slow down, and he comes onto the site. And again, it's all about being a good neighbor. They're going to be there for a little while. It's not going to, you know, it won't be one week, but it's not going to be, you know, it'll be a few months. So if I know Charlie, he's going to want to make sure that he doesn't hear a lot of complaints about speeding vehicles and a lot of dirt in the roads. So they'll do their best to make sure that's taken care of. And if you want us to put up some signs in the neighborhood, we can certainly do that.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments from the public for or opposed?
Mr. Chairman, I do not see anyone else with their hands up.
Okay.
Excuse me?
So this one's very detailed. Again, I'm going to ask for Pam's help on, you know, for a motion on this. Is this a lot of details on this one and ask for the a motion from the members?
So you would need to vote to either approve or disapprove the subdivision. My notes are out of sync. Wait a minute. Okay. And if you were to vote, if you were to vote to approve, there's a list of suggested special conditions that you were given. And there is a list of standard conditions that go into every subdivision. And that would, those are just common, you know, conditions. There's also, one of those is that there's an HOA for the lights, there's an HOA for the road until the city of Brockton were to accept it. Or the HOA can remain if that's how they so choose.
Right. But at this point in time, the city has no plans to accept the road. It's going to be an HOA in a private road.
It has to be an HOA in a private road, minimally five years. That's usually the standard, tends to be a lot longer in Brockton. But after five years of completion, he can certainly petition the city council.
But because of the sewer condition, that is not going to happen?
Well, the pumping, the sewer will never be public. So there is a condition that the that the force main and service connections not fall within the street layouts, except for the tie-ins. So if the city were to accept it at some time, they're not accepting your piping.
Is that in the special conditions, Pam?
It is.
Has the developer received the the special conditions?
They have not. Nope. They just want you guys to take a look at them.
Okay, I'm going to make a motion to approve this definitive subdivision with a statement that this waiver is not precedent-setting. The standard conditions need to be met as long as these special conditions. The applicant agrees to the items in the beta group letter dated August 11, 2021, through the letter dated 8/30/21 from the W Engineering, and has agreed that the items are to be verified by Beta Group as addressed prior to signature of the plan by the board. The clauses review is at the applicant's expense. The letter dated 6/16/21 from Police Chief Goems is to be a part of the approval.
And we would ask that you add in the letter from Deputy Chief Williams?
Yep, I was getting there. Next is also the approval will include the letter from Chief Williams. The applicant has agreed that each home will include a residential file sprinkler system. The final plan submitted for signature by the board, as well as the approval letter, shall include the temporary roadway turnaround on properties at 22 and 25 Westbury Road is to be removed and the area loamed and seeded. Notation that the existing commercial garage on proposed lots 12 and 13 are to be demolished prior to the issuance of a building permit for either lot. There should be no clearing within 25 feet of property lines to homes along Westbury Road, Kelly Lane, on lots 1 through 4, Lowy Lane. None of the force mains or service connections should fall within the street layouts except at the area required for tie-in to existing sewer. The city and the DPW minimum standards require that all water mains within the street layout be no less than eight-inch ductile iron. All hydrants must be Brockton standard, connected to the main via a gated six-inch ductile iron connection. Also, the connection to be minimum one-inch copper. Utility access easements between Amelia Estates and Cypress Woods subdivision must be aligned and the soils on their respective easements sufficiently compacted to accommodate potential emergency vehicles. Approximate location of roof runoffs infiltrate systems should be shown on the plan. Final elevation to locations of roof infiltration systems, sorry, will be prepared at the building permit plan phase of the project. Permanent markers are to be placed at all angle points, points of curvature and/or tendency, including the area on Westbury Road with extends from Kelly Lane southerly. The applicant is to write a copy of the final signed SWPPP.
SWP.
SWP. I thought that was SWP. The city of Brockton and the DPW bears no responsibility for the care, maintenance, repair or replacement of the private sewer system, including but not limited to force mains, pumps, chambers, electrical connection, service connections, et cetera. Request waivers.
Well, that, you have to vote before you can do waivers.
Okay.
And you've made a motion to.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, so we're going to do a roll call vote. And when I do the roll call vote, do I add in a waiver request now?
No, that's taken up after you vote.
Okay, all right. So roll call vote, Larry Hassan, yes. Tony Gonzalez?
Yes.
James Sweeney?
Yes.
Samantha Ambrose?
Yes.
Okay. Now, you need to vote on the waiver for Dead End Street. And then there is a second waiver for.
Right, so we're looking at waiver request section 5B5, which requires Dead End Street to be no longer than 700 feet, unless the opinion of the board, a greater length is necessitated. Do we do these individually or?
Um, these you should probably do individually.
Okay. Well, based on the discussions we have, do a roll call. We don't have to do a motion, right? Just a roll call vote?
No, it's a motion.
It's a motion, so I need a motion on this.
Make a motion to accept waiver one.
Second.
Okay, roll call vote, Larry Hassan, yes. Tony Gonzalez?
Yes.
James Sweeney?
Yes.
Samantha Ambrose?
Yes.
Second waiver request, which requires sidewalks to be eight feet wide, constructed of cement concrete. It is requested that the sidewalk be five feet of bituminous asphalt concrete. five feet of bituminous asphalt concrete in two and a half feet of grass and a half foot of granite curbing. The prior subdivision extension of Westbury was granted a waiver from concrete sidewalks and bituminous sidewalks were installed, as this will be an extension of the existing roadway. We feel the waiver to allow for the bituminous sidewalks is acceptable. We need a motion.
Make a motion to accept waiver two.
Second.
Take a roll call vote, Larry Hassan, yes. Tony Gonzalez?
Yes.
James Sweeney?
Yes.
And Samantha Ambrose?
Yes.
Um, how will you be securing your subdivision? Covenant?
Excuse me? Evan raised his hand. He's got a question.
I just had a question on the waiver lists. We were, we want to have the most minimal amount of waivers, but now that we're hearing from the fire chief is asking us about the fire alarm boxes. So in the subdivision rules and regulations, it says that you have to have a fire box every 500 feet and to be placed, the number and placement to be at the discretion of the fire chief. I don't know if we want to have a waiver that just says, just removes the 500-foot requirement and just says at the discretion of the fire chief. If he wants us to put in pull boxes, we'll put them in. If he thinks they're not necessary, we won't, we won't put them in.
Mr. Chairman, I would be comfortable with the waiver for putting the boxes in.
Okay.
Make a motion to accept the waiver at the recommendation of the fire chief.
I'll second.
Okay, roll call vote, Larry Hassan, yes. Tony Gonzalez?
Yes.
James Sweeney?
Yes.
Samantha Ambrose?
Yes.
Thank you. I think that completes it. Oh, wait, nope. Pam had questions about surety.
Surety?
Yep.
Speak.
I know we haven't discussed.
Our covenant. I'm sure you don't want to give us that amount of cash, so.
Well, there's going to have to be some kind of a surety bond, correct?
They're gonna, they're either going to put them on the covenant or they're going to give us the cash. So my suggestion is you put them on the covenant for now.
Excellent.
Build anything to utilities and road is up to base coat and at the time that you're looking to start releasing lots, they can take that under advisement. And then when you get to a certain point, they will, you can change your method to cash.
It works. Okay. Are we good?
Now can I say?
Yes, oh, Rob, yes, please.
Congratulations.
It's a long road to get here, but I think that all the.
Literally a long road.
Intended.
I thank the, thank the planning board very much for its consideration. It was a lot of work, but I think it's going to be a great addition to the city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let us move.
All right.
Thank you all.
Um, who, okay.
Number seven, definitive subdivision plan. Property map 11 Route 56, plot 25 Rockland Drive, map 16 Route 188, part of the plot 97 Pleasant Street lots, number seven, 17 lots. Applicant Chilton Realty Trust and representative is Jacobs Driscoll Engineering.
Okay, I have moved Mike Peral and I moved Ed Jacobs and.
Are we keeping Scott Faria in here for some?
I don't know why he's here.
He wants to take notes.
Okay.
I can't send him back, though. I don't have that ability.
Poor guy.
I don't think he's there.
So all the representatives are here. We have Jacobs Driscoll and Mike Peral.
And Attorney Burke.
Thank you very much.
Attorney Burke, I'm sorry. Okay.
I'm hanging on.
All right.
Mr. Chairman. This
You have the floor.
This particular subdivision is even more mature than the one you just approved. I had the benefit of representing a Mr. Carney and an appearance before the zoning board of appeals. We wound up securing a variance, so you'll notice that the particular frontages on this are less than the, the standard within the zoning ordinance of the city of Brockton. Ed Jacobs is going to make a presentation, but essentially this has been vetted numerous times with beta and we believe that it is ready for approval. It shares the emergency access concept. Ed and Evan worked hand in hand in coming up with something that made sense. We would ask that after you, after you listen to Ed and his presentation concerning our response to a few of the beta comments, that the board consider approving this subdivision as this evening. Go ahead, Ed. You're.
Good evening.
Good evening, members of the board. We're here again with Cypress Woods. Could I get permission to share the screen?
Oh, you should have permission, but Mr. Chairman, you were going to make a statement.
At this point, I don't think I, I don't need to on this one. If you want me, I can still continue with that. I'll make the statement regarding Jacobs Driscoll, one of your employees, Greg Driscoll. His wife and I work together at Keller Williams Real Estate, but I have no financial interest in this project and I still feel capable of making a clear decision on this project tonight.
Thank you, sir. And the applicant has no objection.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
So do I have permission, Rob?
You should, sir.
All right, so I'm on two different screens. Is that why? Hold on. Hold on, I can bring it over here, I think. All right. This is going to be difficult. I am definitely challenged here. Rob, do you have it on yours?
I do have it on mine. Hang on just a second. I think I have the most, oops, up to date. Let me.
Thought I was being clever and going with two screens. I outsmarted myself. We want the one from November, I mean, that's dated September 7th, Rob.
They just recently sent the plan, so that may or may not be in your because there are probably renditions at this point.
Yeah, we've got a ton of them. Well, there's been three, there's been three.
This month.
No, two this month, I think, right? September 7th. Yeah, we've had September 7th and September 20th.
Um, let me see what year this is or what date.
September 20th is in the Google file. It's also in the
This one's, this one's marked the 22nd.
That's the one we just, that's the latest version right there.
Can I, can I do that one then?
Sure.
All right. Bippity boppity boo.
There we go. Can you go to page three, Rob? So this basically shows our subdivision coming off of the end of Cypress Drive. And if you go, look over to the right, you can see that we have Amelia Estates sketched in there and you'll see the that little dash line that's coming out of there. That's the, where we're going to hook up. Hook up the easement for access and water.
I want to go here.
Yeah.
So here's Amelia Estates.
Yeah.
There's the.
It is easement, right. So we've, we've looked at this subdivision a couple of times in front of the board. I mean, as Attorney Burke mentioned, we've gotten a variance for frontage from the zoning board. We have 17 lots and our variance of frontage is down to 127 and a half feet on the straightaways and 107 feet on the cul-de-sacs, on the cul-de-sac for the frontage at the building setback line. All the lots, 30,000 square feet or over. They're all nicely shaped and they all have the building square, they meet the building square requirement. And so we've dropped the waiver for sidewalk on one side. We have the, the only waivers we're asking for is obviously the waiver of frontage, 227 and a half on the straightaway and 107 on the cul-de-sac. And the dead end length, which we've discussed before, it's a little over 1,300 feet. We're adding on to a, to existing Cypress, we're adding on an extra 900 feet. As you can see, Cypress comes down from Rockland and Dead Ends now. And then the only other waiver we're asking for is the waiver from four feet of cover over one grouping of drainage structures, two catch basins and a drain manhole that are right down next to where the existing Cypress stops. And the reason we can't meet that requirement is they're going directly into the detention pond to the east. And we have to by law keep two feet of cover from the bottom of the detention basin to the groundwater. So we've done a test pit there and we know what the groundwater is. So that dictates where the bottom of the drainage pond elevation is. And then we can only run the pipe back at minimum slope until we get to those catch basins. And when we do that, we only have two feet of cover. Otherwise, people coming down Cypress Drive would drive right into a two-foot wall when they met our subdivision, if we had the four feet of cover. So there's no way that we can get around that, basically. Two feet of cover is fine over cast iron pipes, so we should be fine with that. And that's the only other waiver we're asking for is just that little section right when you come into the, come into the new subdivision. There's no way we can meet the cover, the four-foot cover requirement. We've met all of Beta's requirements. All the changes that they required, we have made. There's just one small, I guess, item that we keep going back and forth with them on, and that would be the discharge on a certain storm from the detention pond. And that's why I have Mike Peralt here to discuss that, if anybody has any questions about that. Mike designed the whole system and did all the calculations. So we're happy to entertain any questions at this time.
Before Mike jumps in and gives an explanation, just a clarification, I thought I heard it, but I just want to make sure. We, we, we have a waiver on the books for the length of the roadway.
Correct.
Yes, right.
Yep, sheet two, I think, or no, the cover sheet as our waiver requests.
Yes, all right.
Bottom left of the cover sheet.
Did you update that waiver request?
Yes.
No longer looking for sidewalks?
Correct. We have sidewalks on both sides, Pam, on the.
Both sides, okay.
On the last plan.
On the new, on the latest plan?
On the last two. Actually, it was on the plan for the seventh as well.
Oh.
So that, right there, it's right on the cover sheet, Rob, right where you have.
That's where the request is, but where the, what page is the sidewalk to be on?
Oh, that would be on six, I believe. And go to seven.
Just let us know ahead of time by email that you're withdrawing requests, because I don't look at the cover sheet, so.
No, but, but Pam, on, when we, when we gave you the, when we submitted on the seventh, we submitted a new waiver list. It should be in the packet.
No.
It should have dropped that one.
You know, I'll be honest.
I do see sidewalks on both sides.
There's been so much stuff coming in, all I was doing was moving it.
Yeah, no, it, it's definitely in that package on the seventh. Yep. Yeah, so we, we went with a five-foot, a two-minute sidewalk, both sides, two and a half foot grass strip.
Concrete sidewalk?
By two minutes, pavement. By two minutes, concrete is pavement.
Blacktop.
Blacktop, yeah.
It's, but Cypress is not blacktop. Cypress is concrete sidewalks. Existing Cypress is concrete sidewalks.
Oh, okay. So your, your regulation is for
Concrete sidewalks.
Concrete sidewalks.
I'm sorry, concrete sidewalks. Yep, I misspoke. Five-foot concrete sidewalks on both sides, two and a half foot grass strip, vertical granite curving. And right where you have that center there, Rob, you can see catch basin one, catch basin two, and drain manhole three. Just those two pipes from CB2 to DMH3 and CB1 to DMH3, those won't have the four feet of cover. Every, every other pipe in the subdivision will. And as you can see, we're meeting the old Cypress. So that's dictating where those catch basins, the elevations of those catch basins have to be.
Excuse me, Pam, I just want to make a note here then too, on some of the notes we have here. Number two, addendum B is no longer an issue because they're stating on their plans, they have the sidewalks and the existing, okay, so we don't need to worry about that when it comes to further down the road here. Okay. Thank you. Any questions from the board members or is there any other discussion from the team? Attorney Burke?
No, I think we're good. We're ready to answer any questions if they come up.
Okay. I don't have any particular questions at this time, but board members?
I'm, I'm good. I don't have any questions.
No, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Tony?
No, sir.
Okay. This is a public hearing, so is there anybody in favor or opposed? We'd love to hear them and.
John Zine has a question, sir, and it's regarding the current cul-de-sac and discussion regarding an island for traffic control. Where does this proposal come into play? And
They have a lost house.
Do you have kit? Oh, I've got to share. I'm sorry. Hang on.
So is this regarding the existing cul-de-sac?
Yes. Yes, it is.
Right, so we have no plans to alter or disturb that existing cul-de-sac.
There is a cul-de-sac right here.
Right, yeah. If you go to sheet seven again, it might show it, Rob. Right at the bottom, you can see the curved, the curved pavement running down through the word construction. Yeah. But we have no, we have no plans to alter that. If you look at the plans for Cypress Drive, it shows Cypress Drive, just as we have it drawn and it's founded just as we have it drawn, that pavement that's going out into that, that property to the east, it looks like it's on their property to me. It's, it's off of the public road. There's no easement as far as I'm, as far as I'm aware.
I'm trying to open up a aerial of the area. Oops, sorry. Too many buttons. That is interesting, sir.
That the pavement goes off the property, off the public way, right?
Um, let me share this, hang on just a second. I am all thumbs at the moment. Oh, that's not what I wanted to do.
Yeah.
So it's not an official cul-de-sac.
No, it's not.
Looked out that way.
Right.
Um, I would assume that the property owner down here may want to reclaim that property.
Mm-hmm.
But, um, without the deed, um, condition that the other properties had on the north side of this, that the developer would terminate the cul-de-sac, I think that is at the developers or at the property owners, um, request, at the property owners', uh.
Discretion.
Discretion, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
And I have another question to answer. Um. So, uh, Zine wants to know how they proceed with making this request? Is the new cul-de-sac going to remain a true cul-de-sac? Um, the, the new cul-de-sac at the very end of Cypress Way will be a full cul-de-sac, full right-of-way. Um, but I think the question was, um, can, can the city or, or the Zane, uh, build a island in the cul-de-sac? But the, the issue is, is the cul-de-sac's not a real cul-de-sac, so it should go away. Um, therefore you don't have enough right-of-way to build an island in the center of that, um, right-of-way.
Right. Yeah, and that would, you know, that's a pub, that's a public way now too, Cypress.
Correct. Um, if there are other, um, people who want to provide testimony or ask questions, please, again, uh, use the raise your hand, uh, icon at the bottom of the page. Do you have another question from, uh, Zane? So there's no way to mitigate traffic into the new subdivision? I think the sheer fact that it is a, there's one way in and one way out, sort of mitigates the traffic. Um, I know the city is not, um, uh, the DPW has never been in, in favor of traffic tables or speed bumps, so, um, I, I do not know, but that's something that, that we can discuss, um, with you, with DPW. Wish I had a better answer for you, sorry. Any other questions from the public? Anybody would like to speak? I do not see any, sir.
Okay, so we need a motion from the members with the standard in special conditions?
A motion to approve with the standard in special conditions stated.
Second.
Do a roll call vote. Um, again, Pam, on this, do, do we need to read through all of these as I go through them? Do you want me to read through them?
The conditions are absolutely the same as in the lot one and the lots one.
Okay.
Um. Same special.
Subdivisions? Same special conditions.
Um, yep, almost, eh, eh, exact.
And then we'll have to do a vote on two waiver requests, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So then we're gonna do a roll call vote, um, Larry.
Who seconded that?
Sam did.
Samantha.
Thank you.
So, roll call vote, Larry Hassan, yes. Tony Gonzalez.
Yes.
James Sweeney.
Yes.
Samantha Ambrose.
Yes.
Um, waiver request, section five B five, which requires dead end streets to be no longer than 700 feet unless in the opinion of the board, a greater length is necessitated. Need a motion?
Make a motion to accept waiver one.
Members, we need, okay, we got a second. We, roll call vote, Pam?
Yes.
Okay, so a roll call vote, section one, Larry Hassan, yes. Tony Gonzalez.
Yes.
James Sweeney.
Yes.
Samantha Ambrose.
Yes.
The other waiver was, it was number three, but it's, the other one is not necessary at this point. So addendum B, typical cross-section, minimum cover from four feet to two feet for, I'm not sure what CB stands for, but CB number one and number.
Catch basin.
Catch basin.
Catch basin and DMH number three only. We request that if you approve this waiver, it is the condition that the DPW Engineering Division review and approve this motion.
Um, just for an explanation, I went to engineering with this request 'cause this is kind of out of our expertise.
Okay.
And, um, the initial reaction was no because you just need to provide that much cover. But then after discussing it with them, they were willing to take another look at it, but.
So the condition is.
I could do for a motion.
All right. I'll just say, we've done this in the past, as long as we use cast iron pipe, which we have specked out for that, it's, it's not a problem. And I did call down to DPW and left two messages down there and I had never heard back, so I wish I had better news, but.
Make a motion to accept waiver, um, as described in number three.
Second. Do a roll call vote, Larry Hassan, yes. Tony Gonzalez.
Yes.
James Sweeney.
Yes.
Samantha Ambrose.
Yes.
Thank you. Oh, we gotta talk about surety on this too, Pam?
We do.
If I may, if I may, could we just ask for the waiver for the alarm box as well from, um, Chief Williams while we're doing waivers?
I'll make a motion to add the waiver as suggested by Chief Williams.
Second.
And roll call vote, Larry Hassan, yes. Tony Gonzalez.
Yes.
James Sweeney.
Yes.
Samantha Ambrose.
Yes.
And then Pam, I need to talk about surety or how we're gonna handle that.
Same way, same way as the last one.
Absolutely.
So go with covenant?
Yep.
Yep, okay.
I believe that's it for now, anybody? Are we done, that was it?
It's been an interesting run, thank you very much.
And I, like, they said before, a long road. Thank you everybody for your patience and hard work, I appreciate all the work that everybody's done, and does it, anybody on this panel too?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And if you all stop up and sign those plans sometime in the next.
Would someone like to make a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Meeting is now complete, thank you, thank you everybody.
Thank you everyone.
Thanks guys.